That's all it takes, a couple of tortillas to throw me off.
Everybody?
Good morning.
Commissioner O'Rourke, would you lead us in the pledge this morning?
I'd be proud.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Pudgeon, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Kramer?
Present.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Here.
Commissioner Rexrode is absent with prior notice. Chairman Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Here.
Commissioner Alguire?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
You didn't hear my head wave.
I did not hear the head wave, sorry.
I'm sorry.
We'll put a bell on that next.
Well, we have one item on the agenda, looking for a motion to approve the agenda, or if you have anything else to add.
I so move.
Support.
Second?
All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, six to zero, thank you. We have public comment at this time, if anybody would like to make public comment? Yes.
My name is Scott Richards, remake concept. See this sign, this is what I agree with. I'm not a military. I'm not going to be again anymore. Because if you look back when they dropped Adam Brown, you didn't hear about this till later. A lot of veterans died because they walked around in radiation. After, trust me, Adam Brown, he died. And what did come to light for like twenty years ago? And I skipped forward to Vietnam, where the Marines and Army walking around in Agent Orange. And that didn't come to light twenty years later. So there's two things. When I was in the military, they gave us this little white pill. And all it had on that pill was a part number. That was it. Didn't say what the pill was, didn't say anything, but we were told to take it. We had sergeants watch us take it. And what's supposed to help us if we got tackled with medications? Who knows what's going to happen? How the side effects helped, hurt a lot of veterans. So when the government scared us to try to take this COVID vaccine, or the China virus vaccine, which was in the back of us to screw up the case of Trump's election, and gave our clerks an opportunity, we said, well, all these men and folks just came in late. It was, that gives us a discerning heart. We all have talents. All of us have talents. And it's what we use the talents for. In this book, this love letter, it says there's no fear in life, perfect one cast out here. Fear has to do with one. So you shouldn't be, if you know Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior, you should not be afraid of him. Because if he died, it'd go home to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service. Anybody else? Any commissioner comment? Just like to tell this gentleman that our veterans rep is right down the hall, Chris, he's just an outstanding guy, and he probably needs, he probably needs some company right now, he was sitting there a little bored. Yes?
My only comment in reading this, and it's center our fourth board on this sheet, which is the Benji Lelandah Environmental Health Board of Appeals. So should that not be an A? Well, we have B slash L, E H B O H. So what you've got here is Benji Lelandah Environmental Health Board of Health. And it's Board of Appeals.
Is the appeal, is it, I can double check?
No, so go to the top, at the very top. In your boards, you have an H, you have an N D and an H. And I think it probably has for years. Do you see what I mean?
Oh.
On, on, up here. So as we were looking at these, I kept looking at it, trying to figure out what the heck BOH was, and it's BOA, I think.
Yeah.
A like apple. So that was it. Just so there's no more confusion in the future.
Yes, please do.
We've all gathered, we've consulted, we've looked at the board. It's set up like I've been doing it for the last few years. We have tab five is a table of all our current applicants. The red indicates they're currently seated on a board. The blue means they've indicated their interest in serving on that board. And the black means they're through over thirty or younger, so they should retain that seat. And two, what I don't really anticipate a lot of extension today, but if you want to do that, and maybe you could add it to the January agenda, if you strongly are changing that policy, you could certainly do that since Doug's not here today.
Change policy on what? I'm sorry.
Well, if there's any modifications you want to suggest, change your current policy in boards and commissions.
Oh, gotcha.
You could add that to the January agenda. And then right off the bat, when you go to tab three, just an overview of what we're going to be looking at, the capture of the top was the board, how many seats are open, the term, all those analysis of what that board does, the current structure, who sits on it, and then the brief history of who sat on that board.
Thank you.
Thank you, very well, very well organized, Laurel, thank you.
What is, what is maroon?
The colors on this, huh?
Well, they don't want to bring them on.
So you said black?
Right, there is no black.
But there's maroon, but there's, so they both mean?
It's on top here, guys.
No, here.
If I went through the maroon, they do not see where it's going.
Okay. Maroon is, and then the light blue and the dark blue is like their first and second?
Right here.
Okay.
These are different, though, that goes.
I wanted to bring our attention to page three.
Under tab two?
Yes, under tab two, page three, just our policy, just to remind us all that maximize opportunities for citizen participation. A citizen may normally serve on only one board. And further, a citizen can serve only three consecutive full terms on a particular board, commission, committee, or authority. And we've sometimes waived that, but we've always tried to do that to make sure that we get a broad representation. So if we, if we decide not to follow that, I think we ought to waive our policy on that particular one. Yes, Commissioner Lautner?
Where did our rulers go?
Oh, I only have them up for budget process.
Oh, my gosh. I can probably, I'll just use a sheet of paper today. It's just handy, I use it all the time, and usually here.
So do we know how we're going to approach this? We'll take one at a time, and? We'll take one at a time, and this is a committee that holds, so we can be fairly informal about it. I think we ought to look at all of the applicants, and who the current members are, and then entertain a motion to appoint somebody.
And again?
Start with Bay Area Transportation.
And again, we have a, we have a chance to review, or kind of take some time to think about these appointments, right? Because we'll be voting on it on our executive meeting.
We'll be coming up with draft recommendations today, that we would then review at the executive committee and approve at the board meeting.
So we do have a chance to?
We do have a chance to, to?
Make some calls, or?
Yeah. How the committees?
On the other hand, we usually try to kind of do it today.
Pardon?
Unless we want to follow up with conversations with someone that's not in the room. We've usually already done that by now.
When was there time? Didn't we get this on like Tuesday?
Thank you. Last week.
Whatever. Whatever.
Yeah, nothing's cut and stone.
Okay, thank you, that's all I wanted.
So let's start with the Bay Area Transportation Authority, tab three.
John Somerville is excellent, he's only been on there one, he's a real team player with that board. I would strongly suggest that we let him continue. And I like our policy of letting people do at least two terms, because it takes a year or two to get your stride.
He's withdrawing, though, right?
No, not Mr. Somerville.
Okay. No, let's let him, he's amazing. What he brings to that board is incredible. Like, as far as organizational, because he worked at, what was it? Cherry, Cherry People. He was the former CEO, but like, his organizational, like, he's, he's just, he brings a lot of knowledge, and?
And he's Lelandah.
He has one of yours.
Beta. Yeah. Well, he has to be. He is our Lelandah representative.
But I mean, he's a very good Lelandah rep, in terms of representing him.
Yeah, he's, he's fabulous.
He does a good job.
Yeah.
He's the best of both worlds, he was the CEO, and now he's a farmer.
Oh, really? And he's got a great tan.
So, so is, you want to make a? Motion to recommend?
A motion to recommend to the County Board of Commissioners to reappoint John Somerville to the Bay Area Transportation Authority to a three-year term, expiring December 31st, 2026.
I'll second that.
I'll third that.
Any discussion?
Well, I, personally, I haven't talked with him, I probably should have, I was really not happy with that he went along with Kelly in diluting Lelandah County's representation on the beta board, but we've made it through that, so I hope he has learned from that, and will, as Gwen said, represent Lelandah County on this board, it's very important to do so. So we'll give him another shot.
Anything else? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Tab four, the Environmental Health Board of Appeals.
I'd like to note that?
Charles?
I'm sorry. My head, my, my mind just totally went blank, because I was doing something else.
We have three, three names on our list, and Charles has said he does not want to be reappointed.
And he is on another committee, so?
This does need GANZ data, I don't think they need, they need it on a GANZ database.
I was on it once, and we met once.
Dan Barrows is serving now, Charles does not want to be reappointed, so we have Mr. Arons, who presently serves, Jay Johnson, who served before.
Jay has moved out of the county.
Oh, really?
There is no status.
Well, Jay's no choice. Then, we have Cora's wealth?
Went to the Commons?
And he is serving?
Nice.
What is Mr. Welch?
At Cordia, there at Cordia.
No, he's not.
Welch. Does anyone know Mr. Welch?
One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four.
This is from 2018.
So he's on the Soil Erosion Sediment Committee?
Yes, and they've never met.
And they've never met?
Yeah.
So we can put him on another one, but it would never meet either, and that's kind of sad, but he's our, he's the only other application that's going to qualify today. So I recommend we put, now, we also do have a choice. We don't have to appoint anyone today, if you want to try for one more month, or in the next couple of weeks, to try to find somebody that hasn't ever served, or isn't serving on, on something. So that's something to consider as we look at these. As you said, the committee process works that we make a recommendation, and we do have time, so?
You're right.
I have, I have no problem appointing Mr. Welch, but?
I don't either, especially since he's, his only other board is one that also doesn't hardly ever meet. Where does Mr. Welch?
He is?
Is that Elwin Township? Does anyone know, or? Northern sites? TC?
I thought he was by Sutton's Bay. Is he?
It's a TC address, so?
A TC address.
Got to be a little further south.
Yeah, could be Bingo. I guess I don't know.
You know it? Never, I don't know who Mike. I was down in the area.
Anyone want to call a reference?
I would, before we, or at least call him, because this was from 2018. Has he, has he been approached to see if he's still interested?
He is serving on?
Five years ago.
Some of them did respond with a refresh.
I just wanted to mention that while I know that, as you can see, this is, Laurel manages this process, and it's quite cumbersome, and she does an amazing job at it, I just want to remind you all that if we postpone this process beyond December 20th, we will not have the opportunity to have Laurel's expertise in this. So I just, it's just a request, that if we can move this process forward, I think it would serve us all well. So thank you for that opportunity, just to share.
Yeah, and I think on some boards that meet quite regularly, or are really active, exactly, and especially something like, just what comes to mind is, is Brownfield or something. I would not want to hold up that process. A lot of these can be just a little bit more flexible, so?
You know what, he applied for this? I'd be inclined to give it to him.
So I make a motion we appoint Bud Welch? Bud Welch. Does he know that he is up for this right now?
Just for reference, we had received an application from someone who did this only year ago, and when she pointed to that district board, she said, oh, well, I forgot, I hadn't applied for that. So?
You don't know? I have a motion, but I don't have a second.
Second.
We'll have discussion, and I, I will start out. I, I don't know anything more about Mr. Welch than I knew when I came here by looking at his application, and I think the application's four or five years old.
It is.
And I don't know if he has any background in, in, in the committee work. I, I feel a little bit uncomfortable with approving him unless we reach out to him and say, are you still interested? And, and what do you bring to the table?
I support what you say, and are completely disinterested.
We do have a motion, though, so let's talk, yes. Commissioner Lautner?
I, I do believe, I was kind of being cautious, because I don't know if there's two Bud Welches in the county, but we had Bud Welch served on Parks and Rec back around 2003, perhaps? And then I know we appointed him, he's on the, presently today, if I could, if my ruler's working correctly, is on the Soil Erosion?
And that's never met.
It has never met, but?
What it might?
I would expect that Laurel will follow up with him, if the recommendation today is to put him on, and if he is not interested, or something, we will, let's take that opportunity to look for somebody.
Mr. Rush?
I'd offer to call him, or contact him, if that would help the group.
Laurel, Laurel.
You, are you sure, you have time?
And just for perspective, at the very end, we're going to discuss a couple, that the Construction Board of Appeals Amber wants to repost that, because after the year that she did get, after expensive advertising, it qualifies, and you've got three seats. And then with the Girls Management Plan Committee, you can read Trudy's dissertation on that.
Holding on. So when you call Mr. Welch, you will be asking him more questions than Mr. Wessel?
Well, if he's still interested in those applications, I?
What he brings to the table? Okay. And that's part of your role, not necessarily ours? Okay.
He was on the Solid Waste Council at one time. Do you, you've been on there for a while, do you know him from there?
He, I did not serve with him on that, not on Solid Waste.
You know, just for a perspective on these applications, I did that years ago, and you get, you know, you get this list, and you go, huh, okay, well, I, you know, check, 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 these are all possibilities, and then you don't do it again. And five years later, somebody calls you up and said, are you interested? And you're like, yeah. It's not like you apply every year, once you've done it, it's there. Well, for three, four? And you know you don't have to keep reapplying, because you've got everything. And what is that again? Is that? So this one, this would be his last chance?
The Brownfield Redevelopment Board, I reached out to every one of those, and they, at the last minute, say, yes, we're still interested, but they didn't, we didn't hear a conversation, and it's like, oh, I'll just make sure.
Do we have a motion? Any further discussion?
I looked him up, he's quite, quite active on county Facebook, and registered voter, 67 years old. At least he's, he's out there.
He's a real person.
I didn't want to see, you know?
Not a robot, then?
Right, not a robot.
Okay, let's vote on the motion, all those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion approved, five to one. We're now at the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and we have?
We have the three interested and still serving, and they're eligible for another term.
Right.
So I would recommend we appoint John Arons. I should not have tried. God bless you. Mr. F. Taxidas, and Mr. Foster, to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board, for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2026. Support.
Any discussion?
I will support that, John Arons has applied for all kinds of things, so I'm not sure he wanted to change, but I'm on that board, and all three are really good members, and I would support. He is on the Parks and Rec, and he's pretty, pretty active with us now, with, at least with Miles Kimberly, so? But I'm seeing more people back here, or am I not understanding this? There's a?
They checked the box.
So we're not looking at those, or everyone has looked at those really carefully already, or? Usually, if, if somebody's only served one term, we give them a second term. Oh. Because it takes a year or two just to get your?
Up to speed.
Yeah, just to get up to speed. So we don't usually take them off.
When I went through these, I didn't think I saw anybody who isn't already serving on a different board, because if there had been somebody who wasn't serving on anything, then you would have the opportunity to, uh, go back and say, okay, which, you know, which of the two boards would you prefer to sit on, or, we could do some jockeying around. Because I know there's some confusion, I, I had seen some names in here, and I'm like, well, why didn't you apply for, like, the solid waste board? That's a tough one for us to fill some of those positions. And everyone thinks solid waste has to do with, with something other than recycling. So I really wish we had a different name for solid waste. I wish it were, you know, solid waste slash recycling, so people are interested.
It is more than recycling, though.
They, they believe it has to do with Williams pumping.
Oh.
I mean, every time we hear solid waste, I want to make that joke. Yeah, I mean, I hear it. It needs a rebrand. It needs a rebrand. Yeah, it does, for sure.
Shouldn't you know that Trudy's often said that it's good to have movers on landbank also being around, and vice versa, because the two are so aligned.
I, I, I did see that, but was, I mean, I know that, I'm sorry, I know that, but what I saw, what surprised me, is they're not, it's not, it is not the case in every situation, some, okay, that's what I saw.
I would just like to say, T, which is the way, Extasiatus, his name is, F. Taxidas, we just call him T.
Okay, I would, too.
He is an absolute, he has to, we have to never take him off that board, as long as he's willing to serve. He's an environmental consultant, and he knows everything. He works at the Commons, he's been working on for, for years, I mean, with, with the firm that's redoing those buildings, so he knows the ins and outs, that the rest of us just kind of, anyway, he's, he's like a hired consultant, and we're getting him free.
So we have a motion, are we ready to vote? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, six to zero. We now have the landbank, we have one vacancy, and we have one current member that would like to be reappointed, Richard Isferring, and my understanding is he's doing well.
I would move that we reappoint Richard Isferring to the landbank fast-track authority.
Support. Discussion? All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We now are at tab eight, Michigan Department of?
Seven.
Seven, Michigan Department of, you're supposed to look at the left side. Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and we have one seat open, and we have Sue Chapman, who does not want to?
She is eligible, and she does wish to remain.
Oh, she does wish to remain?
The director has indicated that she is thoughtful and organized, and brings expertise to the task.
Okay. And we have Terry Mulvahill, who has good for one more year. Do I have a motion?
So we're moving to recommend Susan Chapman reappoint?
I would support that.
Reappoint Susan Chapman to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Board to a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2026.
A motion, a second?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in support of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, six to zero. Well, the next one is the Airport Authority, and, and, did I miss another one?
MMRE.
Yes, we have?
Oh, yes, yes.
Mr. McNaros.
Greg does not wish to continue, he's on the Committee of Health, and he's on the MMRE, and he does not wish to continue with MMRE.
I would move that we appoint Allison Zimper, she is a social worker on that board, it's very, very important. First of all, Lelandah County is the only county that does not send a commissioner. Only one. And why that?
The only one that does not what?
Does not send a commissioner. So this person sits in a room with, every other county sends a commissioner. But she is a social worker, and that's really, really helpful on that board.
Be a big asset, I support the motion.
Yeah, that's huge.
Any other discussion? All those in support of the motion to, to recommend Allison, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero.
And she's new to any, serving on any?
I think it's a brand new.
Excellent, that's great.
The next one is the Airport Authority, and the current chair is wishing to be reappointed, Steve Plamondon, and I've watched Steve in action, and so has Jim O'Rourke, and so have many of us, he's outstanding. Jim, do you have a recommendation?
I would, I would, first of all, like to say that he's probably the second most important person on that airport board, next to Kevin Klein. He chairs it, he runs a fantastic meeting, yes, I would recommend that we appoint Steve Plamondon.
Support.
Discussion? All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, six to zero. Parks and Recreation, we have one seat open, and let's look to our current Parks and Recreation Board members to make a suggestion.
I, if I may?
Um, I, if I may?
Yes.
Um, so John has served on Parks and Rec, and he's done a fantastic job. Um, and I know he could be reappointed. He does presently serve on two boards. God bless you. So, um, considering our policy of trying to get, um, more persons who have never served on boards with the ability to serve, this would be an opportunity. We have two applicants that have never served on boards and that have expressed interest in Parks and Rec. And I didn't look at addresses. One thing John does bring to us is a west side of the county representation. But I do like his, um, representation, um, on Brownfield. I thought that was maybe a little bit more important with, with the skills that he brings to that board. So, um, that being said, we have, um, Keith Bedune and Harry, um, Stephens. So we have Leland Township. God bless you, Leland County. I would recommend in, one of, one of these two to serve on Parks and Rec and give them an opportunity to serve on board.
Well, I've been working with John on Miles Kimberly, and we're kind of in the middle of adopting a new plan, master plan for it. Has he expressed interest in continuing? Yeah, I guess I feel a little uncomfortable booting him off.
Pulling him, because he can serve. He is eligible to serve. It's just our opportunity to open it up, and I appreciate that. If he's been active, and, and that's the thing, he's, he's from that side of the county. That's a real draw. That's a real draw.
And he, and he's got a lot of use, a family use of the park.
Applicants, because I think if we go further in, I think the solid waste had an opening in it that... No, I think that one was an education seat, so that one might not work. I appreciate that. If you're in the middle of your grant, your master plan for the park, to pull one of the members if he's active, and I, I appreciate that, so.
Want to make a motion?
Your motion.
Um, I, certainly. I move to recommend to the County Board of Commissioners to reappoint John Arons to the Leland County Parks and Recreation Commission to a three-year term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Support. All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, six, zero.
Does he bring coffee?
It's always here.
I, I, I need to, I actually didn't realize that the guy I sit next to on Brownfield...
Was John Arons?
Was, is, is an owner at...
He is the founder, he is brother.
And I'm now going to have a new request. You really should show up with coffee.
So...
So we, uh, we now are on Planning Commission, and we have three seats open. We have Amy Trumbull that wants to not continue. And we have two serving members that do want to continue.
So I would recommend reappointment of Craig Brown, Robert Miller, and appoint... And appoint...
Why don't we approve those two first?
Because it's a reappointment.
Yes, split the, that's fine. Those two.
Is there a second to that motion, then?
I'd support that.
Discussion? All those in support of the motion to appoint the two serving members to continue, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, six, zero. So we have one other vacancy.
And I will recommend we appoint Harry Stephens. I mean, sorry, Keith Bedune.
As the education?
Um, no, I thought he, um...
I'm not saying...
Oh, this is the one. It's the education seat that's open, isn't it?
Yes.
And that's at Francis, um...
And we've also got Craig Brown, who's been recommended by Garth Green and John Popa.
We just, we just did him. He was at first motion.
Oh, was he? Oh, good.
This Francis is interesting.
That's one. He, education, right?
Yeah, like, I have extensive experience with boards and commissioners.
I can't read these.
He is, I think he's the one that fits the educational slot. You're right. Yes, I was, I was thinking of solid waste. I think that's worth, it's gonna maybe fit.
He's in my district. I don't recognize the name, but... Yeah. How do you say it? Crikey?
He sure has good experience.
Yeah, I think it's a brand-new application.
Francis Crikey sure has good experience. He might be valuable.
Well, the, the opening is an education slot, correct?
Right. I do not see one in education that, uh, I want to support.
BSMU and MEA.
Would people be comfortable of, uh, holding off on a third appointment and recruiting somebody with an education background?
He does have, he does have education. You missed him. Page, these aren't paid, these aren't numbered.
Twenty years of service, community service, education.
Yeah.
That's where he's got a master's.
Governor's Job Training Committee?
Yeah, just a second. I think the page is stuck here, so we need these numbers. Well, that's hard to, so it's hard to read them.
I would support, um, and the Governor's Job Training Committee, and twenty years, he does have education. I would actually support appointing Francis Crikey. He's brand-new to this process, and, and received his first appointment ever. And I would support, um, appointing Francis Crikey, getting him involved.
I, I would support that. One of the things that he said was, familiar with the Opens Meeting Act, but I might need a refresher, so he's been there.
So we all do.
Okay.
So he must have been on a township planning commission?
Whatever he's on, he's on a page.
He said Livingston County.
No, he speaks to...
He's been on the council, he's been a mayor.
We got this application, you were soliciting for Delacore.
Because he's on the lake.
And he also made a King of the Lake interest.
Well, he mentions being on the, while I was chair of Planning Commission. And he was, I don't think he ever served on a chair as our planning commission.
Says Livingston County.
Well, no, but unless there's another Steve Yoder.
Yeah, item number three on the back of, of the suggested updated changes on the back of the signature page. There's several items, and that was item number three.
As Chair of Planning Commission, I closely worked with staff Trudy Galla.
Are we looking at?
As the backside of his application, the last page backside.
That's actually Victor Goldschmidt's.
Okay, okay, that was, that...
Okay.
Victor refuses to give me a brand-new application.
Okay, that makes sense, because I did serve with Victor on Planning Commission. Okay, that explains it. All right, yes, so...
Boy, are we thorough.
So we have a motion with a second.
We do have a motion.
Crikey. Okay.
Any further discussion on that motion to appoint Francis? All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, six, zero. We're now at Soil Erosions and Stormwater Runoff Control Ordinance Board of Appeals. We have one seat open, and, uh...
She's eligible to be reappointed.
For the board that never meets.
For a board that never meets, but I really don't think that's gonna maybe hold for too much longer. I'm just saying.
You don't think so either.
But that's the, that's the only applicant we have, right?
Tricia Denton?
Nobody else.
In the past, you've, uh, you've, Eric, when you gave the audience a recording, you told me, bless you.
He said, I'll do it. I'm like, good.
So Tricia works with the Glen Lake, uh, Lake Association. So, I mean, she really does know the, know the issue very well. And she's a very organized woman with the president, the legal woman voter. So she's a very serving person in our community.
I would recommend we reappoint her to the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation, Stormwater, Stormwater Runoff Control Ordinance Board of Appeals.
Support.
And...
Further discussion?
I hope they don't have to continue to meet, but if you're right, then she'll be good one.
In, in looking at the, uh, members on this, uh, Mr. Forrest Budwelch is on this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We did find him.
All those in support of the motion, reappoint Tricia Denton, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, six, zero. We're now at the Solid Waste Council. Have five seats open.
Wow.
And I think all, I think the four of the existing members would like to be reappointed. Are they eligible?
Well, no, but yes.
The thing is, two of them are ex officio, so they're not voting in that Umar field, I heard. And she's, one of them, they are, one of them, you know, they're day experts in the field.
Experts in the field, yeah.
Marcus, yeah.
Ones from waste management, and the others from...
From the landfill.
So, yeah, we really, I don't think we can operate solid wastes without them, so...
No, no, they're really important.
We just waived that every time to keep them on.
Does Tom McDonald serve on another committee?
Well, let's find him.
He is fine, but I don't give you...
Yeah, he does. He is serving on...
Oh, yeah, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. Yep.
I don't work with him on any.
Um, this is the one that I was speaking of, that I, in looking through these... Well, let me check. What do we have? Oh, he is already serving. In, in looking through these, I had asked both, um, two, two gentlemen who applied for other boards why they didn't apply for this one, and there was no interest because they thought it was something other than recycling. And yet they do have an interest in it. So my recommendation would be to go to either Harry Stephens or Keith Bedune and ask them officially to apply for this board, and we could appoint it in, in December. That would put, um, new, it would be new appointments. They've never served on boards before, but they have expressed interest in serving. And from what I gather, they would be happy to serve on that board. There is interest, but didn't really realize what it was.
So I would, I would, Marcia Harris would like to be back on that board. And they are in a time of transition right now. So I think her long experience with that board would be helpful as they transition. Am I...
Well, we're, we're also gonna have them MMP, you know, Materials Management. Is that what you meant, or, I mean?
Well, isn't solid waste becoming Materials Management?
No, they're gonna remain separate. We've looked, locked on that a little bit, so I'm sure that's why you're confused. But the last recommendation was to keep them separate. And pending until we know if we're going solo as Leland County or going as a, with other local counties, so.
So we're not appointing anybody to Materials Management right now?
No.
No, not, we've been asked to hold off on that.
And I, and I appreciate Marcia. Marcia served very well on solid waste, but she did serve for another, a number of years. So that's why this would be an opportunity to allow other citizens to, to serve on a board. So I would recommend to the Board of Commissioners that we, um, make this appointment next week at executive, make a recommendation next week after official applicants come in.
I, you know, we already have applicants. I, my inclination is to give it to somebody who's already applied.
I, I'd like to speak to Tom McDonald. He has applied. He's currently eligible to continue. He's done a good job on the Solid Waste Council, as far as I know. He's, uh, led in, uh, Leland Township, the education and the cleanup education for Solid Waste Council. Uh, he, uh, I think he's a regular attendee and is, uh, committed to the solid waste program. And, and I don't see any reason to not allow him to continue.
If that's a motion, I support it.
Yeah, but aren't they already, aren't they, we can appoint four, right? Yeah, or I mean, five. One, two, three, four, five.
What I was suggesting is we at least fill the ones that could fill.
Oh, yeah. Mark Evilheimer, John Fletcher, Tom McDonald, and James Palmer, and save the fifth seat for a new applicant. Is that...
And John Fletcher is, is a new applicant, too.
No, he's not.
No, he's been on it, but he's, he's great, and, and he wants to continue, and that's the only thing he serves on.
Melinda has made a motion to reappoint the four that are currently on there and, and keep one open until we, uh, consider other applicants.
I would amend that to...
We don't have a second for that motion.
Actually, yeah, I wish our work did.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to amend it that we just reappoint the four who are reapplying.
That's what we just said.
Yeah. Without the, without the, and wait on the fifth.
Yeah, that's what we're...
That's my amendment. I think that's what we're...
No, I said wait for the fifth appointment.
Yeah, that's...
For new applicants. She, she wants to split the motion and just appoint the four.
Oh, okay. Because we have somebody we could appoint who's already applied, right?
Yeah, yeah. We could appoint a fifth, right?
Is there a second for Wynn's amendment?
And what was it, to not wait?
To, just the four.
Don't we, why would we go dig up somebody else? Don't we have, am I confused here? Don't we have somebody who's applied for that fifth seat?
She's asking for the motion to be divided.
If we have somebody who's already applied for the fifth seat, why not appoint them?
Because that has always been our policy to allow new people who are interested in serving on boards be appointed to boards. And these two gentlemen have publicly expressed interest in serving on boards. So I, I'll go over this again. So, so I asked them, I said, we, we have an opening on solid waste, and you didn't apply for it. They had no interest in what they thought the board did. So now that they understand what the board does, there, there will be interest in it. So this would be our opportunity to, to allow for citizens who have never served on a board, but yet who have expressed great interest in serving on a board, to serve on a board. And this board, I think they would do excellent on. I served on that board. I think there, there would be a lot of interest, and I think they would bring a lot to the board. Among the other applicants, I did not see one that has not had that opportunity to serve us in the past.
Okay, so we have a, we have a, a two-part motion on the table, and I think, uh, our practice is we can divide that at the request. So let's take the first half, which is appoint the four existing, um...
Okay, so does Wynn's fail for a lack of second? Because she wants to appoint five today. She wants to appoint four and push the fifth to executive.
I didn't see...
I'm gonna tell her.
I didn't...
I, if, if we're gonna, I would rather take what we've got here. These people are committed. Marcia Harris is...
Before we discuss, let's see if there's a second for Wynn's.
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, discuss then.
I think that we should appoint people who've already applied for it, who have an interest.
Who have looked into what the committee actually does, yeah. I mean, that's part of the application process, so.
If I was a citizen, I'd want, and I've applied for board, we... I'd like to...
This is not, this is not out of the realm of what we've done in the past to try to allow... We have done this often in the past. We have set these aside. Sometimes we've gone back and asked them, are you really interested in this board? You know, it's an old application, et cetera, or we've heard they moved, or... So this is not out of the realm of our past practice. So, and it has been, per your reading, the, the, uh, first tabs there, we try to give all citizens an opportunity to serve. As I said, Marcia was fantastic on solid waste, but she served for how many years? She was on for a number of years. She's had the opportunity to serve. She'd like to serve again, and that does make her eligible, because she's been off, and now she can get back on. But we do have the opportunity, um, to put some citizens on who have publicly expressed interest in serving on boards. So maybe, um, in, by Tuesday, they won't apply for this board. You know, I could be of a misunderstanding that they're interested in serving on this board. And if that's the case, and they are not, then we have only one other applicant. There's also a possibility that we ourselves could find, um, someone sitting out there hiding behind a bush we, we never thought of before, and could ask them to quit coming in and apply because we have an opening. I mean, it's, they would be someone who's never had the opportunity to serve.
So, you know, I just think we need to honor the people who've already applied. Um, so why ask them to apply if we're gonna go find our own people anyway? Like John Fletcher, you guys all said, oh, he's been on. I don't see that he's been on before.
He's serving now. We just reappointed him. The motion reappoints him.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Well, it's read here.
The motion on the floor that... The motion on the floor that I hear.
It's red here.
He's serving. Red means he's serving.
Let me make sure I understand the motion on the, on the table with the amendment. We have a, a motion and amendment that reappoints the four existing solid waste council members. And the amendment was that we go ahead and, and find a fifth one out of the applicants.
Yes, my motion by Lautner, approved by, seconded by O'Rourke, is to reappoint Mark Bevelheimer, John Fletcher, Tom McDonald, and James Palmer as members of the solid waste council to two-year terms expiring December 35, 2025, and move the fifth appointment to the executive session held on Tuesday, December 5, 2023.
Yeah, I'm asking the clerk, can we divide that issue at somebody's request and vote on the four, and then talk about the existing vacancy that would be left?
That's what I have as her amendment.
Which I support.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I have, her, her amendment is to reappoint Bevelheimer, Fletcher, McDonald, Palmer, and you're currently discussing your fifth applicant to appoint.
But what I'm suggesting, can we divide the issue and vote on the four that I think we have agreement on?
Yes, you can. Okay, so am I dividing Melinda's or dividing Wenz's? Because it's an amendment, so.
We didn't vote on.
We have to vote on the amendment.
We haven't voted on it.
I'm trying to clarify what the amendment is, what we can do with the amendment before we vote on it.
Right, her amendment that I have worded is that she was not dividing it, that she was appointing five people right now. That's how I have it listed.
Actually, I wanted to vote on the four, and then we'll discuss.
Would you be willing to redraw your amendment?
No.
We don't want to push it to next week. We have, we have applicants right here. We should be able to make a decision today. That's, I think that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Why push it off?
But why do we have to vote on all five at a time, is what I'm asking. We've got, so, let's, because that muddies the water. So, why don't we vote on the four we?
Let's vote on the four, and then let's discuss the fifth today.
Yes.
So, I'm dividing the amendment.
Yes.
Can I?
Good job.
Okay.
All those in support of the amendment on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
All those in support of the original motion as amended, say aye.
Whoa, 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 you didn't ask for those opposed?
Which one I prefer.
You did not. So, the amendment? You're voting, you asked for support of the amendment. You've got some ayes.
Let me try that again. All those in support of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Amendment passes, five, one. All those in support of the original motion as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, as amended.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, five, one. All those in support of the motion to appoint the four, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We have four solid waste council members, where the vote is six to zero. Now, the floor is open for the fifth one. Discussion?
Okay. Could I ask?
Commissioner Russ?
Mr. Deering, Pat is the one who is not going to, I don't think.
He has too many outside commitments to be.
Okay, and do you know where he lives in the county? Is he down by Maple City?
He lives in Cedar.
Yeah, okay. So, I would like to just say that Marcia comes from Glen Arbor, again, that side of the county, which I think, it seems to me, from my experience, only on a year, is that we're kind of heavy to, you know, this side, so I value that. And also, as a new member to the solid waste council, I would, I don't know if I've ever met her, but I just think maybe her, maybe her historic knowledge of the county, as we do work towards the MMP, might be helpful to have at the table, because the solid waste council will be, hopefully, give a direction to how that committee forms. So, I, yeah, I, I kind of support her, and she just renewed it on, um, in July, so she's obviously very interested, and that's the only thing she wants to be on, and that would be the only thing she's serving on, so, yeah.
Commissioner Craig?
Um, I don't know how I'm going to make this, but I'd like to make a motion that we open up to more applicants before next Tuesday, and then make a review at the meeting. Support.
Discussion of the motion?
I thought we just voted against all that, that we would, we have two people, Marcia and, and Tom McDonald, who've already applied.
No, Tom's in.
No, I understand that, but why not? I mean, if, if, I mean, it's not going to hurt, right? This is, but, this is to have more applicants to review. I mean, the worst thing that can happen is we'll have more talent show up, and we'll have to pick someone, you know?
We do, we do have a motion on the floor, and the only way we can consider, uh, that, that kind of motion would be not to be able to support the motion on the floor.
No, 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 no. I only have one motion on the floor. So, her motion is to, to, to make a recommendation next Tuesday. So, leave it open today.
But we have an, we have an amended motion on the floor. We divided the issue.
No, we're already done with that. You did that. You voted four, three times, and I only had two motions, so I was confused, but you voted three times, five, one, five, one, six, zero. So, I think it's done. Well, that's, so, so I just want to say to Gwen, we didn't, we didn't. This is to appoint the fifth, and I now have a Kramer motion to get more applicants and make the decision at Exec, Executive, reported next Tuesday by Lautner. Now, we're discussing it. Right, so. So, we are okay. We didn't step on any toes. So, your motion, so it's all, it's all correct. It's all correct.
It is a messy process sometimes.
But, well, so some people voted no, no for some reasons, and some people voted yes for some reasons. So, by passing that amendment, did not say we were automatically going to appoint that fifth seat. It said, no, we were going to put these four people back on and, um, look, open up the process. We may or may not give more applicants, but we have a week to think about it. We can make the recommendation Tuesday. Then, we would have one more week to think about it. So.
Gwen, Gwen. Katie gets to talk first. Yeah, my, my, my comment is, we have two people who got their applications in by the deadline, deadline. They're both highly qualified. If I knew that I'd applied, gotten my application in on time, and the commissioners said, oh, we want to look for somebody, that's kind of a betrayal of trust, in my view. I agree.
Commissioner Kramer?
Um, I mean, I just, I feel like this is like settling in the middle, right? We, if we're all going to work together, I don't, as a business owner, if, if there is a possibility that we could pick up someone who has, uh, more knowledge in, in the, sorry, guys, I'm all spaced out. On the board that they're serving in, I think we should allow for that time. It doesn't mean that we can't come back to these two applicants. It means that we're just opening it up. We're giving a little more space, and then everybody on the board feels happy that they contributed.
And it speaks to our policy of, of trying to get new citizens on boards and commissions as much as possible. We've worked really hard at trying to get, give our citizens opportunities. And as I said before, this is not a lot of, we've done this before. We have set aside applicants because they have served on other boards and opened them up, so.
I believe the motion on the floor is that we delay until Tuesday and seek other applicants. Am I correct, Jen?
That's what I have, just for the one vacancy.
Uh, any, any other comments before we vote on that motion?
Just, I would be mad as hell putting you in on board before, and you guys wouldn't open it back up. If I'm at a job interview and there's three people, and all of a sudden, well, we didn't like you, we're going to call you, but it looks bad. It just looks bad. And, uh, that's just my comment. I'm.
Okay, thank you.
But Jim, but Jim, that, if, if you're applying for a job at a company, and the company has a policy that says, well, Mr. Smith, you were employed by us at one time. Our policy is to allow other residents to, uh, to work here for the first time. Our policy is to bring in new blood. Let's use the term new blood. That is our policy. But, that doesn't mean you cannot apply for the job, and that doesn't mean you won't get the job, and there's nothing since we won't appoint Marcia next week. The policy says, if we have the opportunity to allow others to serve, I, I, I could say for a third time, I, I've asked for years that we rename this, because it is, it is very confusing, and this goes back to when we couldn't get Tom Evans to serve on this board, uh, from Leland, because he thought it was all about Williams and Bay. So, it's time to rebrand this so that we can get a true application.
I'm going to vote against the motion because our board rules say that applications are due by the last week in October, and if we have applications by the deadline, then I think we need to honor that. If we didn't have applications, we could reach out and find others. So, that's why I'm voting no. Yes, Commissioner Kramer?
Is that the information that Deb just gave you?
Well, that's a.
It's on page four of your board rules.
She was pointing out something, and I was wondering what that is.
It was in our board rules. So, it's right in here. It's on tab two.
Yep. All right, if it's in the board rules, then we got to do.
Four, five, exactly.
Exactly.
So, we have a motion on the floor to delay until Tuesday. All those in support of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion failed, one, five. Commissioner Russ?
I would like to move to recommend to the County Board of Commissioners to appoint Marcia Harris to the solid waste council for a two-year term expiring December 31, 2025.
Support.
Discussion?
I will be happy to have someone on the west side of the county represented.
Other discussion?
Well, discussion on that. This is, this is the most disappointing thing that, with this board, because we have done that in the past. One of the sole reasons was to get a recycling site in Leland, and we were never successful. For all the years, we had no spot. So, for all the years that we had representation from the west side of the county, we have never gotten a site in Leland Township. And there are many sites that would be available, but the residents of Leland do not want that in their.
She's in Glen Arbor.
West side. West side, so.
Any other discussion? All those in support of the motion to appoint Marcia Harris, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved, five, one. Thank you. And thanks for bearing with me as we awkwardly went through amendments and motions, and that. We are now on, uh, tab, uh, tab fourteen, and that's Network Northwest, and we don't make an appointment at this time.
I included this just so you can see the emails, and I started dealing with former CEO Matt McCollum in 2022, early, and a backboard correspondence. Never really got a good answer, and then of course Terry Vanover, and he's.
Now, he's gone.
Serious?
But we don't appoint their position anyway. We can recommend, but.
But as far as I know, we had, we had a seven, what, this was in one of the fourteen years.
We should ask Doug. Doug is our representative to Network Northwest, and we could, we could check that out. Would you ask Doug about that, Ron? Then we, uh, we have a boards and commission appointments for the Materials Management and Construction Board of Appeals. Um, both of those, I think we've been asked to hold off until, uh, we get further information on, on those two.
I'd just like to recommend that, um, if there are some people out there that want to serve, this is, you know, they can still, they can, this is revolving, correct? So, I would encourage, um, Melinda, you to talk to those individuals and tell them that this opportunity is coming up, you know, and that, you know, it's, it'll be even broader than the solid waste. To me, it just feels like, and it's very, we do need a good cross-section of the people to make sure the land is good, so. There is an opportunity, right?
Yeah.
We're doing that.
Um, do we, do we need a motion to delay a decision to the two boards we're not appointing to right now? Okay, okay. Then I believe that that concludes our work, uh, and we're ready for this issue at the Executive Committee meeting.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question, like, for the, um, Leland Dam Authority, it wasn't included in this, because we just did it in January. Okay, so that's how that works. So, how many other committees weren't included? And the only one I would. Yeah, I would just, and again, that would give them the opportunity for people that haven't, uh, applied, or, you know, still see that window is opening up maybe sooner than. We do this every, every year, though. Okay, so it revolves. I'm catching on. Thank
We might have many appointments, such as with the Dam Authority, and, and interview teachers' task force.
Yeah.
And sometimes if there's a board that is very important, that they get another member, as you said, it's a very active board, then we go through the process of trying to get that. And then, well, Brian Allen got approved with the category for.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. So, it's kind of the exception to the rule, you know, but it's, it's addressed in your policy.
Okay.
Just a reminder that these are recommendations for Tuesday, so they're not final, and they won't be final until the board meeting. So, we'll, we'll talk about them again on Tuesday, and then we'll talk about them at the board meeting if it's, uh, if, if we want to. I'd like to thank Laurel for her background work on this. Well done, Laurel.
Thank you.
Are we ready for public comment? Is there any public comment? Yes.
Harry, I'm on the center of the township, excuse me. Thanks for all the work you're doing. Um, just two things, and they're kind of needed. I wanted to thank Commissioner Ross, all of you guys, because you can tell that you've given so much time. I really appreciate Commissioner Ross's approach, um, in, in as she, as she gets more and more educated, um, and she's helping us learn and hear better, because you guys can go pretty fast, and we can't necessarily catch, uh, what we, you know, we're, not just me, but the folks that are going to, uh, watch this later. So, I appreciate Commissioner Ross's approach to just asking for a little more clarity, a little more clarity. That's really, really helpful. Thank you for that. Um, and one of the things that, that came about on that that I observed, and I'm hoping I'm mistaken, was when she was offering to, Commissioner Ross, Ross was offering to contact applicants. And I, and this is subjective, but I got the impression that the board kind of shut her down on that. That's not her role. And I, and she says, she's my elected official, but since you all are elected, and Laurel is phenomenal, she, what she does is phenomenal, but she's not elected. So, we don't really have a choice on who sits in her role. So, I never want to hear that our commissioners are somehow shut down from communicating with those of us that put them here, that put them here. It, it kind of puts, it puts the whole world kind of upside down, to my opinion. The admins are amazing, and the bigger the county gets, or the bigger the government gets, the more valuable and more powerful your role is, for better or worse. Because again, you're not elected. So, we're sensitive to the idea that our elected officials would defer too much to someone who's not elected, who's there to support you guys, but not make decisions, and certainly not be the one who steering you guys. And that's way back. Okay, that, number one. I also appreciated, um, Commissioner Kramer's, uh, attempt to, to open it up a little bit, and of course, Commissioner Lautner. Um, because what it feels like, it feels sometimes like, um, some are more interested in serving the people than others. And I'm, and a lot of others are sensitive to whether or not you are here to serve an agenda of some sort, or are you here to serve our desires, the people that you're. So, what, what Commissioner Kramer got on record was interesting. I couldn't see what she was pointing out, but I did catch it. And I want to make sure that anyone who's watching, kind of is watching. And that's when she asked what Administrator Allen pointed out to Commissioner Russell, who then made a motion. And what I don't like in that is that it sure looks like Administrator Allen was pointing out a way for Commissioner Russell to shift to the conversation, or shift what actually got down. And I don't see that as an administrator's role. That was an active part. It shut down Commissioner Kramer's, uh, uh, what, what's it called, motion. And I thought that it was a very valuable motion that might very well have passed until Administrator Allen pointed out a point, pointed out something in the rules that are often broken, as we all are well aware, or, or. all are well aware, or, or expanded. But when Administrator Allen pointed that out to Commissioner Wessel, he immediately made a motion that shut the process down. And that doesn't get by on anybody that can see it, unfortunately, I physically couldn't see that process. And, and we're concerned about that kind of approach to government. It's not what we want to see in our elected officials, not what we want to see in a Commissioner general. I'm a big fan of Administrator Allen, she's helping me a lot get up to speed and I appreciate all the effort you guys have put in. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Commissioner Elgar?
I will have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Deborah Allen, on what township? Speaking to the role specifically of an administrator of the county. And the administrator's role in the county is to advise the board of commissioners on policy and processes. And in that regard, I think what happened today is that something that is public information that is in your binders was simply reminded by the administrator in this case, doing their job and their responsibility to the board. So I just wanted that to be on record as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Elgar?
If we're at commissioner comment, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I would like to say that my comment to Commissioner Ross was not to shut her down, but just to let her know what past practice is, that we, that our practice has been to arrive at, at, at decisions today as best we can. We've had these books a week, which is not a whole lot of time, you're right, but generally that's what we have. So they're not, so it's just a reminder of, of practice that this isn't just a discussion session. This is a.
Thank you.
Decision session.
Commissioner Russ?
Yeah, I'd just like to, as, just as Administrator Allen was doing that, I was thinking, I had read that last night and that was gonna be my comment. So we just need help remembering, because we've got books and books of rules and I so appreciate an administrator that comes, stands up and says something at the right time. So it was well, I think it very well received and I appreciate our, we have an administrator that helps us remember all the multitude of things that we need to do, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kramer?
My comment is that, yes, I, I think it's great that Administrator Allen points out these things, but it just would be helpful to point it out to the entire board, not just the chair, so that we can all be in, and including the audience, on what's happening and maybe something that we're missing. Because I think, you know, if we work collectively, then we do better as a whole. So let's focus on that.
Thank you for your comment and I, but I'm going to address it because it's the second meeting in a row that you've, you've been critical of the chair's behavior and it is my role to make sure that we follow our board rules. And I referred to our board rules where this was a part of it at the beginning of this meeting. It was not a motion I made, it was a statement about why we had to or why I, why I wasn't going to support a motion that was on the floor. But I sure appreciate you coming here. Thank you. Any, yes, Commissioner Rourke?
Yes, I'm in possession of an email from November 22nd and there's a couple sentences on here that concerns me. One that says secret meetings. This was sent to every commissioner here and I, I can't believe no one else has raised the question, secret meetings. I, I guess I don't understand about that and put everything on the table. I thought I was part of the team, okay? I don't want my name in the paper. Thanks. There's one part on here that, let's ask Rookie to stop ghosting me. Hell, I didn't even know what ghosting was, okay? I haven't dated in 30 years. Now, I did find out. I can ask that lady and I asked Gwen this morning, what's ghosting? I don't know. Okay.
I said, I don't know.
Ghosting says, when someone who used to be friendly or even romantic with you suddenly cuts off without explanation. My explanation is, one of the commissioners filed a FOIA request last week involving a committee that I am on. You have a right to file a FOIA, but if you and I were in a patrol car, at the end of the day, there would only be one left in the patrol car, right? You come to me before you ever file a FOIA, any one of you. After that, you are ghosted, okay? Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments?
Is that a threat? So if there's two in the patrol car and there's one at the end of the day?
Yeah, you got home, you're sick.
Motion to adjourn?
So, no, I'm on commissioner comment, thank you very much.
I thought you were just fantasizing.
Oh, no. I have no fantasy of death, thank you though, but, so, excuse me, I have the floor, Cam, did you have a comment?
Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So, I don't believe you were FOIA'd, but, well, you might be FOIA'd, but, but certainly, Commissioner, before I FOIA'd you, I would ask for, for that information first as is my practice of asking for it two, three, maybe, maybe four times before a FOIA. So that is my practice. I think this is really quite interesting because, interesting that, that our administrator talks about board rules and, and these sort of things when all of that has been thrown out the window in the last couple of weeks. All this board is doing is picking and choosing. We use past practice when we want to, but when we don't want to, we don't. That is exactly what we're doing here. And as I stated three times, I used that example, I know you're breathing hard and I know you want me to quit, but I do have the floor. So if you just bear with me, because, no, 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 no.
Sorry.
It was a deep sigh. Part of what was in that email, I, this is the sort of thing where someone can say, well, let's all act professional and yet, when I have the floor, it seems to be a breakdown of professionalism because we don't want to hear it. But stop and listen to what I'm saying. That is, this whole past practice and board rules, we can't use them when we want to and then not use them when we don't want to. Somebody has to get it in a group pretty darn quick if you want this to go forward in a smooth manner. So, so, you know, you, I think it was perfect, yep. Commissioner Ross, I'm glad I wasn't the one to shut you down, but yeah, you were shut down. I myself have contacted other applicants before and I've done my research in the applications if I did not know who they were, did not understand the corporation they worked for or whatever, I've done that. You're absolutely allowed to do that. This next week even allows you a chance to do that. I, I commend Jamie for, for her motion. She tried to make everybody understand that we have a week, we don't have to put somebody back on that was on before, because public comment is exactly correct. Do we want to serve the people or do we want to have an agenda? And we had an opportunity to, to repair some of that and we chose not to. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not buying this and I think, I think that we've all got a lot to think about before next week's meeting.
Well, I would conclude and say, I think that we did a good job today. We filled our positions, we followed our rules, we got good people, we honored the people that made their application and I thank you for your hard work and I'm ready for a motion to adjourn.
I would say, you know, that this is the committee.
We are adjourned.